I'd like to call to order the town council regular session. The time is 7:31 and the date is Monday, April 8th. And we are fortunate today to have our Eagle Scout, Sean Fay Wolf, with us this evening, who had his Eagle Court of Honor yesterday. So if we could bring Sean Fay Wolf forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then we will move New Business 13A to the front of the agenda to honor him with his proclamation. So Sean.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to move New Business 13A to the front of the agenda. Just got to get to the right page. Thank you. Sean Fay Wolf. Sean, whereas Sean Fay Wolf is a sophomore and All-State viola player at South Kingston High School and a second-degree black belt, he is a member of Troop One in Kingston and has devoted his time and his energy to complete the requirements of and participate in such a worthwhile organization as the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas in his quest to achieve the designation of Eagle Scout, his accomplishments have been many. Sean earned 50 merit badges and served his troop in a variety of leadership roles, including librarian, historian, instructor, and troop guide. He devoted a website for the historian position. He was inducted into the Abenaki Lodge of the Order of the Arrow. He was the recipient of two Roman Catholic Boy Scout awards, the Adltori Day and Pope Pius XII Awards. He was inducted into the Knights of Baden Powell and participated in the High Adventure at Florida Sea Base and served as Gen Chief of PAC Six West Kingston. Whereas Sean planned, directed, and completed a community service project installing shades on the top of the outdoor dog kennels at the South Kingston Animal Shelter, he designed and constructed an outdoor exercise play area for cats at the same facility and raised the money to defray the cost of the project. And whereas he has attained the highest, most prestigious award in boy scouting, the Eagle Scout Award, bringing pride to himself and honor to Troop One Kingston, his family and to his community, may this be a prelude of his future dedication to a purpose and service until he accomplishes the goal he is seeking. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingston, do hereby extend our congratulations for job well done and best wishes for success in all future endeavors. And if we could just recognize his family and have them stand in recognition as well. We know that it's quite a bit of work.
Where's that grandmother? Is your grandmother here too?
Grandma's here.
Come on, stand up.
Town's very proud of all that you've accomplished. Thank you. At this time, could we have the roll call, please? Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
We have approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session for March 13th and March 25th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have the regular session of March 18th and March 25th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to page three. We have a public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to an application for expansion of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows. Class B Victor Lillica License. Application for expansion of a Class B Victor Lillica License filed by David Barnes Development, Incorporated, doing business as the Muse Tavern, 456 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Daniel Rubino, Vice President. Application requests permission to expand the area in which alcoholic beverages may be served to include additional tavern area in accordance with the special use permit granted by the Zoning Board of Review on May 20th, 2013, and is further divined in an amended site plan dated March 7th, 2013, on file in the Town Clerk's office. Said expansion is contingent upon compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees in arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This time. Steve, do you have anything to add?
Just I'd make a part of this public hearing, the notice the council received, a notice of decision signed by Jeffrey T. O'Hara on behalf of the Zoning Board indicating that the special use permit had been revised to include the, or to recommend, the expansion of the service area. I presented the petition.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Dave Barnes Development, Inc. With me tonight's Dan Rubino, representing the applicant. The applicant's the holder of a Class B liquor license. They operate the Muse Tavern at 456 Main Street. We're here tonight for an expansion of the liquor service area. It's a little confusing. They are proposing to expand the existing kitchen. They are proposing, in addition to the building, a 12-foot by 14-foot addition to the rear of the building. They're also looking to relocate the kitchen into the existing dining area that's located at the southwest corner of the property. It's to the rear of the building. None of that requires Town Council approval because we're not expanding liquor service area, we're actually reducing it by expanding into the dining room area. They're actually losing 60 seats of capacity. They are, however, proposing to renovate the existing kitchen, a portion of that, and add that on to the tavern dining room. That will increase the seating capacity there by 23 seats. So the net decrease in seating capacity is 37. However, they are going to be expanding liquor service into an area that isn't currently liquor service area, so that's why we're here tonight. The zoning board granted two special use permits, one for the expansion of the building itself for the kitchen addition, and also one for the expansion of the liquor service area. As Steve just said, that's part of the record. If I could have Dan Rubino maybe explain a little bit more what they're proposing. Dan, if you could just state your name for the record?
Daniel Rubino.
And where are you employed?
I think right across the street. Muse Tavern, sorry.
And what are your duties there?
Vice President, General Manager, whatever.
And are you here tonight requesting permission to expand the liquor service area into a portion of the existing kitchen?
Yes, I am.
And did you previously receive the special use permit from the zoning board in order to do that?
Yes, we did.
And why are you proposing the expansion of the kitchen?
Well, we're looking to, it's going to ease some of our operation and actually increase our efficiency and allow us to put out a better product. Right now, we currently have about five different places where all our food comes from, and by putting all of our cooking areas into one room rather than four or five different areas, it's going to make things much more feasible for us and allow us to put out, just put out a better product.
And is the new kitchen going into the 12-foot by 14-foot addition that was approved by the zoning board?
Yes, it is.
And are you also proposing to relocate it into the existing dining area towards the southwest rear of the building?
Correct.
And will you be losing 60 seats when you do that?
Yes.
And the area that is currently kitchen, what are you proposing to do with that?
With that, we're going to expand the service area from the tavern, which is the old part of the, the original part of the muse where all the dollar bills are on the ceiling. We're looking to expand into that space, and that'll become part of that tavern.
And how many new seats are, how much capacity will you be gaining by doing that?
In there, it'll be 24.
24, so.
23, sorry.
Okay, so the net loss will be 37 total seats?
Correct.
And is the proposed addition taking up any of the parking area?
No, it's not.
Does the renovations increase your parking requirements?
No.
Does it actually reduce it?
Nope. Well, yeah, good.
Will it affect your operation in any way other than to make it more efficient?
Nope.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask if there's any questions here at the Town Council table.
I'd just say you're trying to modernize and make it more efficient. I've been in the restaurant business for a long time. That's not a bad idea. I mean, things change and you want to shine it up a little bit and get your product out to people more efficiently.
We're just getting old. We're getting tired of going up and down the stairs all the time.
Don't ever admit to that.
Other questions here at the table? Jim?
I don't have any questions. I was at the zoning board hearing and Dan was absolutely correct with the consolidation of the kitchen activities. This certainly makes sense, so I understand what he's doing and the net loss of seats, but better in product being served and probably faster delivery too. It'll be, it'll work very well at the Muse Tavern.
Other questions, comments? Carol?
Dan, so it's the URI room that's going to become the kitchen. It's, I'm looking at your plans here.
Correct.
Yeah. And the bar in the tavern's going to be like a U shape?
Correct.
Very nice. Thank you.
I just think if it's an efficiency issue, based on, you know, the economic times and things that have gone on, if you're going to do something proactively to, you know, make your business a better place for people to go and for you, and save a little bit of money, then so be it. That's, it's a good jo, it's, kudos. Good job.
I just want to say I'm on full support too, Dan. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to the public. This is a public hearing, and if anyone has any comments or questions, if you could come to the microphone at this time and stay tuned eight. Welcome.
My name's Dennis Barrow. I live at 468 Main Street, right next to the muse, and I just have some question as to, I was reading in the Independent, and in the Independent, they said something about more outdoor activities, like the road race and the canoe race and such like that, and I was just concerned about that because when that happens, I leave because it's just too loud. And I was just wondering if that, I have no objection to improving your restaurant for service and all. That makes sense to me. But if you live in that area, as I have, when I started there, it was like, it was a very small bar with about 25 spaces, and now it's morphed into this huge place, and it can be really tough there in the summer, just from the, just from the noise, motorcycles, people coming and going. But during the day, you get a break from that. And I was just wondering with this, if there is going to be a change, whether I'm going, if, I think it said in the paper, 10 such events, and that would be every weekend of the summer. And I wouldn't look forward to that. I just wanted to have my.
Let me just give the Town Manager, did you want to respond or should I have John Kenyon? Steve?
Thank you. Tonight, we're just here for the expansion of the indoor liquor service. We had applied to the zoning board for more relief. We continued that with the zoning board because they wanted to move forward and get this work done before the summer months. We may or may not be back before you with something outside, but again, that's not here tonight. What we were looking to do originally was, they currently get event licenses for some of their events, so we, instead of having the charities having to come in here and do that every time, we were looking to see if that could be done under their own liquor license. But again, not to confuse anything, we're not here for that tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public?
Ella, the only thing I would add to what John has said to the gentleman is that were the zoning board to consider that component of the original special use permit request that had been filed, they would need to, he would receive, I believe, notice, because that has not been scheduled for a specific night, John?
It actually was scheduled. We continued it. We're most likely going to be revising it, so if we do go forward, we're probably going to have to re-notify the butters with what we're doing.
I think that's important to note.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
If I may, what was Dennis's last name? I'm sorry.
Barrow?
Barrow.
Any other comments before we close the public hearing? Any last-minute comments here at the table? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move we close the public hearing. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that we approve this application for the expansion of the muse in accordance with the ruling of the zoning board and the planning board, and that said expansion is contingent upon the compliance with all town ordinances and regulation, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees in arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and issuance of any, of a certificate of occupancy. So added.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any last-minute discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Second public hearing is a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article V, supplementary regulation, Section 503, supplementary accessory use requirements, and Article 12, definitions that would provide allowances for farm events as accessory uses in support of the principal use of the premises for agricultural purposes as shown in Exhibit A, excuse me, Exhibit 1, attached here too. And I believe we're going to have Vin Murray present. Thank you.
Good evening. The text amendments under consideration have been favorably endorsed by the planning board, and I would reference their correspondence provided to the Town Council dated February 13th, 2013, under Chair Mack's signature. In summary, the proposed amendments consist of the following. Under Section 503.7 of the zoning ordinance, that would be, farm retail sales activity would be amended to add a parenthetical farm accessory uses statement as to the section header. And also proposed is a new Section 503.7G farm events to be added. This section would establish the process, a process for farm retail sales entities to add farm events in support of the use of the premises for agriculture. The section notes the allowance for the use is subject to development plan review before the planning board, assisted by the town's technical review committee. Farm event uses are specifically required to be accessory to the principal use, that parking must be provided to support the events proposed, and that all applicable local and state licensing requirements be met. The section also notes that the town's traffic and transportation review committee would provide an advisory review to support the planning board's formal consideration. In addition to that section addition, we, a new definition is proposed to Article 12 of the zoning ordinance, and that would be the definition as drafted 50, 50.4 farm events. And farm events would be able to be hosted by a farm as accessory use, accessory uses that are not agricultural in nature but would serve to promote or highlight the principal farming use of the premises. Events would be placed into three categories per the definition, that being educational conferences, fundraisers for nonprofit entities, and lastly weddings or other personal recognition events. We made note in the staff memo to the Town Manager that this, under state law, Rhode Island general laws 2-23.1-8, notification to farmers, that there was a notice, a specific notice of tonight's hearing made to, I think it's about 24 entities on the, on the notice listing that's maintained by the Town Clerk. So that was done as of, I believe, March 20th was sent out by the Town Clerk. These amendments are in the, I guess, the trend of the town's continuation, the town's tradition of periodically modifying regulations regarding agriculture to try to better support these uses in the community. The particular amendments were developed based on other Rhode Island community experiences. We did look at Quidditch Island in particular, and we had conversations among staff and also the operators of Farmer's Daughter on Morse Field Road, as well as Ken Ears at the RIDM Division of Agriculture. The Farmer's Daughter, as I understand it, is interested in pursuing these types of accessory uses should the proposed amendments be, receive favorable consideration by the Town Council. I would add a couple of other, when we had the Town Council's work session before the tonight's meeting, we did talk about some concerns or had arisen regarding providing appropriate notice to property owners in proximity to these proposed uses. The development plan review provisions of the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations typically do not require specific notice to abutting property owners, so in that regard, we drafted some language that would be for consideration as part of the public hearing and added to the end of that Section 503.7G. And I'll just read the language that was drafted. "The applicant shall provide post-card notice of the planning board's development plan review consideration to property owners within 200 feet of the area that is proposed for the activity and parking facility to support the farm event. Said notice shall be mailed not less than seven days prior to the planning board meeting." So that would provide, which is a little different for a specific notice. And I would just add one or two other quick things. "The planning board for development plan review has the ability to provide conditions upon a use, and specifically under their guidelines that they would, they would have to make certain findings in terms of if they were to approve this use, and that would be that the granting of the approval will not result in conditions nimical to the public health, safety, and welfare. Secondly, the granting of such approval will not substantially or permanently injure the appropriate use of the property in the surrounding areas or zoning district. Three, the plans for such project comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and these regulations," meaning the subdivision regulations. "Four, the plans for the project are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and lastly, any conditions or restrictions that are necessary to ensure that these guidelines have been met have been incorporated into the written approval." So the planning board does have, you know, a lot of discretion in terms of providing appropriate conditions for, under the development plan review process, such that the, you know, any use before them in that regard is, you know, they can tightly draw the conditions for operations such that it functions properly and doesn't cause any nuisance conditions or undesirable impacts in the neighboring vicinity. So I think that's about the length and breadth of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have to assist your consideration.
Thank you, Vin. Questions here at the table?
Ella, could I ask that the, for the record, that you incorporate the February 13th, 2013 decision of the planning board with its recommendation, finding the facts, the consistency with the comprehensive plan, and the consistency with zoning. I'd also recommend that you incorporate into the record the list of farm retail sales mailing list that was used in accordance with Section 10.5-17 of the town code relative to notice on agriculture-related events.
I hope we have all that. If not, we'll.
You've got them with Vin's memo.
Okay. Questions here at the table? Carol?
I have a question. Vin, would there be a number of, would there be a limit on how many events they could have or would that be limitless?
Well, I think two things I would offer in that respect. Number one, it would have to be an accessory use, so if you were having events, you know, two or three times a week over the course of a year, you would, I would say that that would begin to be beyond, certainly be beyond an accessory use to a principal use allowed under, principal agricultural use. And secondly, the planning board, I think, would have the discretion to, in essence, you know, based upon the individual circumstances and application that comes before them, they could indeed establish a cap on the number permitted, permitted by type. I think they would look at that individually and, you know, based on the particulars of an application and.
Other questions here at the table? Jim?
Yeah, Vin, if it's a wedding event and alcohol will be served, is that our license, what is it, F for a 19-hour one or?
License is free, there's no need for license.
Long as?
If you're selling it, you need a license, but if you're just giving it hours, just like your own.
Okay. But do they need to come to the council for that permission? No?
Last question, only goes to non-profits. It goes to the state.
I'm going to go to Steve and then Vin.
The state issues licenses to caterers that, for alcoholic beverage services, so I would assume, Jim, that in events like this, it would be the caterer that would hold the state license that would be dispensing the alcohol.
Would we, just to finish up, would we have to supply police, local police, to, in this case, be on Route 138? Is there some kind of a traffic control or is the planning board out of that?
I think that would be a determination or a recommendation that would be made through the Traffic and Transportation Committee based on the size of the event. I think it would have to be evaluated on an individual basis.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Let me just, let me just see if Vin wanted to add anything to Steve, what Steve had to say.
No, I was going to mention the same thing Steve mentioned about the bonded caterers, but.
Okay, we covered it. Thanks.
This is not, this is not limited. This would be open to any people who own farming area within the town. Am I correct or did I miss something, that's specifically to one certain area? Because I know there's other farming areas around the town, so.
No, it's not, it's a general ordinance, so I mean, people that would qualify under the ordinance as a farm entity could come forward and secure the, you know, the approvals from the planning board, but it's not limited to a. from the planning board, but it's not limited to a particular property.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions here at the table? Seeing none, I'm going to open the microphone for any public comment or questions, or if any of the farmers would like to come. Welcome.
Hello, Sarah Partiker from the Farmer's Daughter, and I would just like to thank you very much for taking this in consideration to amending the retail farm sales ordinance so that we're able to host farm events. In these tougher economic times, we're, we're having to be creative and develop ways to be more profitable and viable. So by having farm events, it really utilizes the land even better by keeping it as an open, green space and venue. So I really thank you very much for all the work that has been put into this, to create this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to come back to the table one more time. Any comments, questions? Could we please have a motion to close?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And...
I move that we approve public hearing B, that the town, and I put forward this motion, that the town council hereby approves public hearing 7B consisting of text amendments to the zoning ordinance concerning, concerning Section 503.7 farm retail sales activity, farm accessory uses, and Article 12 definitions as detailed in Exhibit 1. Said approval specifically incorporates the recommendation, finding of fact, and findings of consistency with the comprehensive community plan as articulated by the planning board and its correspondence to the town council dated February 13th, 2013. Steve, you also wanted in the motion that we include the farm retail sales list. Did you say?
No, you're incorporating what you needed to incorporate, but you've got to add the amendment that Vin drafted and read into the record relative to postcard, US postcard notice.
So included in this would be Vin's amendment requiring the postcard notice to property owners within 200 feet, seven days prior to the planning board meeting.
Good job.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yeah, I'll certainly support, support this, and I've always supported farms. And my only concern is, again, going back to the issues on Route 138, I think of the holiday, Halloween issues on Route 1, if you're familiar with Tower Hill Road. I really believe that the state needs to review the speed of the traffic in certain areas and think about widening that area just so, or maybe an orange light or something just to slow down traffic, because coming from the west or east, both you're, you're heading downhill, and if you have a weekend and a weekend event and a wedding and so on and so forth, and their general business, not just here, but even if it's out on Route 1, I really think that needs to be reviewed before a license is offered. I'm very concerned about the traffic issue on Route 1, Steve, and, I mean, on 138 in particular.
The Town Transportation or Traffic and Transportation Committee reviewed the concern that you had expressed and presented a request for the State Traffic Commission to consider the introduction of a turning lane in front of the Farmer's Daughter. That request was denied by the State Traffic Commission. In fact, through Chief Espy, I provided the council with a copy of that about a month ago. So we have requested that on the, and been denied. On the Route 1 issue, that has also been reviewed with, with the state. And what has occurred there is they've prevented, and we've enforced it with police officers, any type of parking on Route 1, which was a problem where they were parking in the breakdown lane in, in previous years. Unfortunately, that event is not licensed by the town, and really, we would not have an ability to prevent it unless it was in violation of the zoning ordinance, which it hasn't been found to be as such for the several years that it's been, that event has been conducted there. But we certainly can review that issue again. But unfortunately, the 138, that has been reviewed, the chief did send a letter specifically, and the letter was addressed with a traffic engineering study through state DOT.
Certainly appreciate that. At least on Route 1, when you come out, you're going in one direction. On 138, you've got to cross both sides, so that's my concern. Thank you.
Any other comments here at the table? We have a motion and a second. So we're ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And good luck, and we look forward to perusing some of these events. Next item on the agenda is Communication D. This is a resolution adopted March 11th, 2013 by the Charleston Town Council in opposition to House Bill H. 5393, an act relating to towns and cities. Subdivision of land that would require cities and towns to establish and maintain a public notice registry of landowners, electors, and nonprofit organizations requesting notice for any changes to local subdivision regulations or zoning ordinances is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. Jim?
Oh, I was going to say, we discussed this at the work session this evening, and certainly, I think at that time, we're definitely going to support the opposition to this, to these acts, and that's certainly a position I would take.
I take that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication E is a resolution adopted March 11th, 2013 by the Charleston Town Council in opposition to House Bill H. 5703, an act relating to towns and cities. Subdivision of land that would provide for the addition of certain definitions relative to slope of land within the chapters dealing with zoning and subdivision of land is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. Jim?
Again, at the work session, we discussed this, and even though that the definition slope of land, as Steve said, might not apply to most of South Kingstown. As Steve mentioned, and our major concern down here is home rule, they're taking this step by step away from us, and so I'll certainly support the opposition here by Charleston.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication I is a communication dated March 28th, 2013 from Eileen Stone, Coordinator of South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, seeking approval of revised signage to be distributed to liquor establishments as part of the campaign to reduce impaired driving, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. And at this time, I don't know if Eileen had any words. Welcome. And Perry Rasso is here as well.
Hello, Eileen Stone, South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention Coordinator. I sent you a memo with a revised copy of the signage. I had it cleaned up a little bit so that it looks a little bit more professional, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have or continue the discussion that we had from our last session.
Thank you. And I thank you for the letter, which gives a little more detail and explanation. So I'll start with any questions here at the town council table, or comments?
I have a comment. I think that really cleans it up, makes it very succinct, as it is most, not most, but all alcohol services have to be certified by state law, and there are signage in most establishments saying that. And also, this is just another, you know, another reminder to people to, you know, be careful out there. You know, so it looks good, and I think that would be appropriate in all establishments.
Other comments, questions? Jim?
Yeah, I certainly appreciate your commitment and your intent. I'm going to vote against you, simply because I don't believe that the town seal and the police emblem badge should be on this certificate. I think this should be totally voluntarily and by, by your agency alone and/or others, if they're, you know, they're chamber commerce on there, others, but I'm just very uncomfortable having the town seal and the town police seal on there.
I'd like to mention, I feel that it, it kind of helps create a sense of teamwork, which is important. I think it makes the message stronger to see that it's not just the establishment, but it's the establishment and, and, you know, these parts of the community that are very important to, you know, the community. So I, I think that is, because, you know, after the last meeting, I figured I'd just hang up the sign, but I thought it would be way more effective having the sign with the, with the, but I certainly understand.
Yeah. I mean, I certainly appreciate your thoughts on that. I'm just, as I said, I'd rather see chamber and other associations and whatnot, and not the municipality involved. That's simply my, those are my thoughts alone.
Can you explain that a little bit more to me, why, why you would not want the town or the police department when you are the ones handing out liquor licenses and our law enforcement is a partner in enforcement, and actually really addressing drunk driving or impaired driving? And this really speaks to the safety of our community.
I think so, but I do see the, every restaurant I've been to, I've seen what's on the wall. There's 21. I understand all the requirements of the service, the education they have to go through, and I think that's plenty. I'm just having a problem mixing private and public here.
Other comments here at the table? Meg?
This is a tough one for me, and I will tell you why. I hear Jim's points, and I agree with them emphatically, because I, I don't want to send a message from the community that we don't want to exist. But I'm going to put it to you this way. I live in the Green Hill area myself, and there was a young woman, two or three years ago, who got out of her vehicle and was in the breakdown lane and was hit by a drunk driver. And we heard the crash from my house. My husband went out there. And that was a rude awakening for us. I have to be very candid about that. So I agree with this premise, and I, I truthfully don't have a problem with the reciprocation of anybody who's on here, and I agree with Jim, maybe the chamber should be added or other people should be added. We are all a community here, and we all have to speak to the safety of our citizens. And I think everybody should drink responsibly. Not everybody does drink responsibly, but I do think that we have to come out as a community and, and support not only the establishments, but the people who are coming to those establishments and hoping that they make the right decisions. So that's, that's how I feel, and thank you.
May I respond?
Yes, of course.
I can, I can understand your point of view, but if town council, our town council, isn't willing to take a stand on this, then why would we be expecting some of the other communities as, you know, building social capital with some of our businesses and whatnot? This is strictly a volunteer.
Oh, I, I am in support of this. I am in total support of this, but I do understand where there may be some connotations where there are some questions that are raised. I, I'm in support of it. If we can save a life, guess what? We've done the right thing.
I will, I, I'm going to support this. I've heard some of the dialogue at some of the Partnership for Prevention meetings, and, you know, I think that when we lost a few of our youth here in the community, very, very sad times, and I think this really pulls us all together as a community and sends a message that we stand together and we want to keep, keep our community safe. So I am in support of it. Carol?
I like this message much better than the last one. I think it's very clear, and who can't stand behind it? So thank you for changing it.
So this is Communication I. Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of Communication I and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Motion carries 4-1-0.
Thank you.
Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. This is the time where anyone may come to the microphone and share a comment or question about our community. So the microphone is open. Jim?
Yeah, well, I could have waited till Steve's managers, but might as well ask him now. Steve, can we, I don't know if we need a liaison, I don't know how closely we work with the Narragansett Town Council, but this, this deep wind issue is becoming a small nightmare for the town of Narragansett. I don't know where this transmission line is going to come ashore. And if it comes overhead after that, then what might harm Narragansett economically might harm South Kingstown. I think it comes up, I'm just not sure, I think it comes up to the Clark School, then would it be overhead or underground between there and the transmission lines? But my biggest worry is economics here, that the state needs jobs, and every time I open my own electric bill, I see my various costs at about seven cents per kilowatt, and I see this baby going from 24 to 48 cents over a 20-year period. I am absolutely baffled as to who's got the risk here. And it seems to me that the state of Rhode Island, heavy reliance on electricity, and the ratepayers are going to be paying a huge sum. So some are another, you know, we need to either work with Narragansett or certainly start going to some of the meetings and, and just see how this might affect a larger audience, and that would be those people seeking jobs and businesses trying to survive whose electricity costs are so great in this state, and you know there are many of them. Number one is probably Torrey Manufacturing at Quantz at Point, who took this to the courts and said, just to be outrageous, what their current electric bills are and what they'd be paying with the POC approvals here. So I, I find it dangerous, this whole approval process, and I know, believe me, I understand wind and solar got to be part of the energy scenario, but, but this deep wind thing really has me confused and very much concerned.
Steve? I'm not sure what, what you're asking. Is it for, to find out what Narragansett's position is relative to, to the, to the proposal, Jim?
Yeah, I think they're, they're also seeking more information, and I know they have meetings coming up, April and early May. They certainly want transparency involved here, nothing behind closed doors, so on and so forth. And just reading the, in the paper yesterday from the head of Deep Wind, you know, he talked about wind power and the future and this and that, but he certainly avoided costs. And he certainly avoided the fact that he's guaranteed a return, both by the Federal Energy Commission as well as the state PUC. And every time I see this, I, my memory takes me back, and you can help me, Steve, you were here in town back to the early 90s with the Meridian, was it Meridian or Median? Yeah, Meridian Electric Plant that was going to send transmission lines from URI. URI was going to be the host community. Hundreds of thousands of gallons of oil was going to be stored on campus, and thank goodness that was defeated. But somehow or another, you know, the hair on my back stands up when I see this, and I remember that issue, so maybe you can fill in for me here somehow or another.
I think what we can do is to ask Narragansett to provide us with any information that they receive. At this point, I'm not aware that there's any lines that would be coming into South Kingstown. The entire facility would be with lines whether above ground or below ground within Narragansett where it would go into a feeder station. So it wouldn't go through South Kingstown as had been originally drafted when they were looking at different options. But we certainly can contact the town of Narragansett and... But we certainly can contact the town of Narragansett and get whatever written information that they've been able to receive on it. I think that the question of the cost associated or the cost guarantee certainly is an issue that's been dealt with by the General Assembly in addition to the PUC, where there was a guarantee as to what the rates were going to be. This also plays into what the cost will be for energy in New Shore. So there's a number of different factors that are going on. We can attempt to collect that information for the council, and if the council wishes to schedule a session with the Narragansett Council, once they've received the information, we'd gladly try to set that up for you.
I certainly appreciate that. I've just never seen kind of a study just to what the economic cost could be to the largest electricity users in the state. I think that's my major concern. I'd hate to see a Torrey leave with, what, a thousand jobs up there and something like a $15 or $20 million electric bill already? And they own plenty of land in Virginia and other places. This just has me very concerned, more from the economic standpoint than, and we need jobs and we need a solid growth of jobs in businesses in Rhode Island. I mean, Deep Wind does promise they'll open up Quant's at Point, they'll have a couple hundred jobs up there, but boy, all you need is a few of these manufacturing companies to leave who need that electricity desperately, and boy, that sure offsets what Deep Wind can do. But I've just never seen a pro and con, I've just never seen an economic analysis on this. Anyway, I just, I keep searching the newspapers and I'll keep reading, it'll come up with something, but at least if you could be in touch with Narragansett folks, just meetings and whatever might take place.
Will do.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments here at the table? Carol?
I would like to commend and applaud the South Kingstown Police Department for their quick and thorough response to the URI situation last Thursday. The evacuation of Chaffee Hall, the search of the building, the police secured the campus with the lockdown. They were the first ones on the scene, and I'm very proud of our department and all of the officers. I understand approximately half the department was there assisting in this project, and as far as I'm concerned, the leads in this whole, the leaders in the entire lockdown and securing the campus and evacuating the building. And I'd like to say thank you to all, to the police and all of your offices, Chief Vesbia, for making us all feel safe in a situation that could've been horrendous. Please come forward.
While he's coming forward, I want to also acknowledge that in addition to the police, all of our EMS crew was involved in terms of dealing with this incident. And more importantly, there was coordination with other municipal departments. Narragansett provided assistance both in South Kingstown and at URI, same with Charleston, and with the town of North Kingstown. And all of those efforts were coordinated through South Kingstown. We were there within the first three minutes, and at that point, Captain Ewan Chow and Lieutenant Horroho really took command of the situation and provided for proper coordination.
Thank you very much for that accommodation. We trained very well for what they term "active shooter." We used some federal funds, and our whole department has been trained in response to an active shooter situation. I was on the scene, and I couldn't be more impressed or pleased with the performance of the police officers of the South Kingstown Police Department. We had 18 members of the department on hand, we were the first to arrive, and we were the first to enter the building. We cleared the building within 30, 30 to 35 minutes. As you know, there was no active shooter, there was no firearm found, but it was a great training exercise. And the town manager is absolutely right with the concept of mutual aid. We were able to muster the resources of several departments in the area. As a matter of fact, tonight on the agenda, we're gonna, you're gonna review a mutual aid request from the town of Richmond. But that's, this is, this is a good example of how beneficial mutual aid is, when we can call on the resources of other departments, and it's very beneficial to the, to the project. So, thank you so much. You're absolutely right, they did a great, great job, and fortunately, it turned out the way it did. I know there's a concept or an issue about arming the campus police. For a long period of time, I've been a proponent of arming them. President Dooley, I think, is on board with that. I think it's only common sense that if you're a certified police officer, you ought to be able to have the tools, the tools of the trade, and certainly a firearm is a tool of the trade. You know, had there been a combat situation, although we arrived very, very quickly, had there been a combat situation, the campus police officers would not have been able to respond, and I think that's a shame. But that's a decision for someone else to make, but I just wanted to make my position pretty clear. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Great job.
I think it also, Chief, maybe it should renew our call for gun control on certain types of weapons, because I think it's a great example of what a scary world it's become, and, you know, these kids actually thought they heard somebody say, "I have a gun," and pandemonium sent in, and I think that it's an appropriate reaction with what we see in the news.
I've also, for a long period of time, been a proponent of gun control through the International Association of Police Chiefs. I sit on a couple of committees, and I'm an advocate of gun control. I think that, I think that needs to be in place. There is no reason for anybody to have possession of an assault weapon or magazine which contains any more than 10 rounds. Those weapons are designed to kill human beings, and there is no need for citizens of this country, in my view, to have possession of those type of weapons.
But Chief, that day in Chaffee, in that auditorium, that's exactly what those kids were afraid of.
Well, they have a good reason to be.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everything you did.
So beautiful stated, Carol.
Thanks a lot.
I just have a few announcements. It was a busy weekend for the town of South Kingstown. I just wanted to make reference to the South Kingstown educational fundraiser that took place at South Kingstown High School with Erica Van Pelt. She's just a great young lady who just gave back to her community and pulled together a whole gamut of talent that performed at the high school on Friday night. It was absolutely fabulous. And I just wanted to comment that the Broad Rock Middle School Coyote Race took place on Saturday, and Carol and I attended, and...
Did I win? I think I asked that 100 times. I think I won as one of the last with a dog to come in, or first with a dog.
You won the Keira Spelling Bee, is that enough?
You're right, Ella.
And I just wanted to, you know, restate again the Sean F. Wolf, the Eagle Court of Honor on Sunday, and I know that was attended by Carol and Meg, so thank you. We do have our public hearings with the Joint Town Council School Committee tomorrow on Tuesday and Wednesday, April 9th and 10th. So if the public would like to come and view their comments on the budget, 7 o'clock. And just a couple more dates, April 23rd, we have the Mattoonik Village presentation at 7 o'clock at Mattoonik Elementary School, so that's coming upon us rather quickly. And then we got an announcement for the 40th anniversary on April 25th, 5 to 7, from Johnny Cake Center. 40th anniversary Volunteer of Appreciation Event. So it's a busy town, a lot of great things happening. Any other comments at this time? We'll move to Mr. Alfred's report.
I think we've addressed each of the issues I was gonna bring forward. Sorry, yield to the solicitor.
Just to report, as you know, that our Plan 10, which is the Ocean Mist, has filed its brief connection with the CRMC, approval of the town to install the Seawalk. We will be coordinating our response with the County CRMC and finding out if we can make it.
Thank you. I'm not sure if that microphone's working, but...
But we heard ya.
Which brings us to appointments, and I believe we have one.
I move that we reappoint Charles F. Moffett to the canvassing authority for a period of three years. His term expired in March of 2013. That would bring him to March of 2016.
Second.
We waited six years, sorry. That would be March 2019.
I second that.
Any further comments? Did we, did we get how many years Charlie was actually doing this for the town?
Steve told me 12.
12.
I said I believe it was two terms. I'm not sure whether, Charlie could've been there three terms for all I know.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We've already covered New Business 13A, which brings us to New Business 13B. This is a resolution adopting the town beach policy for the 2013 season as shown on Exhibit 2 attached here, too, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated March 25th, 2013, entitled "2013 Town Beach Policy and Fee Schedule." And let me tell ya, I'm in the beach mode, so this is good.
There are no changes in the fee schedule from what the current year is. The beach policy deals with both setting what the specific rates are, as well as what the requirements are to be able to participate in the programs. I'd be glad to answer any questions the council may have on the ordinance, or as you say, as the, on the policy as presented.
Questions here at the table?
So the immediate construction is completed down there, so we're looking forward to a long, warm summer.
Yeah, what, right now, we have additional work. The pavilion is still closed, and the work will be completed on that hopefully within the next few weeks. That's working with the insurance trust, and we'll be providing the services. We've got two staircases that are on the beach side that need to be repaired or reconstructed. We're also, we also have an application pending as far as a maintenance permit with CRMC, as far as bringing in as much as about 500 cubic yards of sand. So there's a number of activities that need to be completed in advance of the summer opening. I'd also mention that in accord with the capital budget, we are looking at having the bid specs prepared for the ISDS system replacement, hopefully this fall, and hopefully the relocation of the pavilion sometime next, next spring, and so it would be within the 13, 14 year. Vin and I attended a meeting involving URI and the study that's going to occur on all of the beach fronts that really came out of the public hearing that we had on the town's application. And at that meeting, there was new documentation provided on really where the anticipated impacts will be up through the year 2100. We wanna look at those maps and make sure that the setback that's provided for the relocation of the pavilion keeps us out of harm's way. It's sort of a two-edged sword. The further we go back, the more difficult it is for people to use the facility appropriately, particularly those that are mobility impaired. But at the same time, we don't wanna have to move this a second time. So there's a number of activities that have to occur, both before we can open the beach and also what we would hope to have in place for the start of the 2014 beach season.
Steve, just one last part of that, the sand, will we have to buy the same special sand that we did before, I think off of Curtis Corner Road? I can't remember where we got it.
We would, we would be purchasing the sand. We wouldn't have any of that available. Coastal sets what the, what the standard is on the sand as far as the, how large the granules can be.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But no matter where you buy it, even if you meet spec, it's not gonna be beach sand.
No. That's beach sand. Now we can pretend, right? Large blanket.
Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of New Business Item B.
Second.
Motion, wait a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business Item D is a resolution authorizing a ward of bid to Liberty Chevrolet Incorporated 90 Bay State Road, Wakefield, Massachusetts, for the purchase of one 2013 Chevrolet Tilt Cab Six-Wheel Dump Truck in accordance with all bid specifications and amount not to exceed $42,748, including trade-in value of $10,000, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated April 3rd, 2013, entitled "Bid Recommendation Tilt Cab Six-Wheel Dump Truck."
..............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
in terms of how the officers would interact, as well as what would warrant this type of action. There would be a request by the requesting agency to the responding, the responder would come in, they would work under the receiving agency's command officer. It also spells out whose responsibilities and liabilities are associated. So if Richmond were to send officers into South Kingstown, those officers, let's say, were injured, they would still be the responsibility of Richmond, not the town of South Kingstown. If, in fact, there was damage done to a police vehicle that belonged to Richmond, and the town was able to collect on a subrogation, we would be responsible for conveying that. But the town of Richmond would be responsible for handling the damage to their vehicle as they would if it occurred in their own community. So that type of delineation is provided within the agreement, as well as under whose rules and regulations they're acting. So I'm supportive of the council's approval of the mutual aid agreement as presented in the chief's memo, and certainly, as he mentioned earlier, is clear indication on why there's a need for these type of things.
Thank you. We have a motion, and then any comments?
I move approval of New Business Item E.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Comments or questions?
I think the chief and Steve said it all.
I think this is a good thing.
Obviously moving in the right direction here, so we appreciate the effort.
And I see that this goes back to the town council, back to 2003?
Beg your pardon?
I see that this goes back to a motion made for the town council back in 2003, so it's nice to see that it's finally coming to fruition.
Mm-hmm.
This is great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Best of luck. Which brings us to our closed executive session. This is a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A2 to discuss matters pertaining to collective bargaining relative to the South Kingstown Municipal Employees Association contract. So before we go into executive session, anything else for the good of the order? Could we have a roll vote, please, Susan? Yes.
Just a minute.
Yes.
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 And we're in executive session at 8:44.